I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting for the Board of Selectmen. We're here to get some work done. There's a few items that were clogging our agenda that we wanted to knock out of the way. On the agenda for tonight is we're going to hear an update from the 300th Committee. We're going to hear about the capital improvement plans financing from the town accountant. And then we're going to go over the Selectmen I've got to discuss with their departments, the capital requests. There will be a few of the formalities that are dispensed with for this meeting. But I'd like to now start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So yeah, if you can stand, you can remain standing, please. The Governor of Dovall Patrick has ordered that the United States flag and the Commonwealth flag be lowered to half staff in all state buildings from sunrise until sunset on Thursday, December 19, 2013, in honor of Specialist Daniel X. Stein, who died on December 10. This is also from Dovall Patrick in honor of Lance Corporal Matthew R. Rodriguez of Fairhaven, who died on December 11, 2013, and also in honor of Sergeant Daniel M. Vassalane from Abington, who died on December 23, 2013. Could you just observe the moment, stand in space? Thank you very much. As I said, we're going to move right into the meeting here.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. We are going, we are going to dispense with, since it's a working meeting, we're going to dispense with public input, and we're not going to have Selectmen updates unless there is something urgent from somebody that can't wait until Monday night.
That was Jim.
Go ahead.
So I had the honor of going to the awards banquet for our Littleton Football High School championship team last night. They presented the Board of Selectmen, this plaque in honor of their fantastic and outstanding season. They also gave a plaque to the police chief, fire chief, and I believe Sam Park, he made a donation for some of the private buses that we rented. So if we could have Bill Colton possibly hang this in this room, that'd be great.
I'd like to see if he'll do.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thanks, Jim. With that, I'd like to turn it over to someone I'm really looking forward to hearing from tonight, Mr. Jack Holman. Welcome to basically your year. This is 2014 and the year of the 300th celebration, so.
Thank you, Ted. And I would like everybody to rise and pick up their mug. It is non-alcoholic. A toast to the town of Littleton and its inhabitants at this, the first Selectmen's meeting of our 300th anniversary. May we mark and celebrate our 300th with the same enthusiasm that the founders of Littleton envisioned in 1714. And may we leave for generations to come a sense of pride in the past 300 and a renewed purpose for the town of Littleton in all the years to come.
Yeah, true.
Would you like to describe the other treat that was left for us as well?
No, you, that, I will, I will describe it. One, one of the things that the committee said right in the beginning was that there were only a couple of things in terms of memorabilia or other things that we were going to give away. One, one of every piece of memorabilia was going to be given to the Historical Society. And anything that we put naturally in the time capsule would be also that. Everybody else has to pay. So if, and I hope all of you want to keep your cups. Yeah, they are $10 apiece. They're $10, they're $10 apiece. And Keith, would you be the first one out? Would you collect from everybody, please?
Sure, sure.
This is a great salesman.
Set aside the way you raise money, this is going to be very successful. Here's your cup, hand it over.
If you want to keep it.
If you want to keep it, yeah. And if I have to take anything back, never mind. No, what we want to do is just sort of give you a quick update. Everybody knows the dates, everybody knows what we're doing in terms of the events, go on the website and everything else. But there are a few things that, that need to be talked about. Certainly, one is memorabilia, and the other one is financing. Financing, let's take financing first. From the financing standpoint, we can't thank you enough for the $50,000 because that gave us the flexibility of being able to talk to people, the small business owner, the Marin Pass stores in Littleton, that, that can't come up immediately with $1,000 to buy a banner. So we can now go to them, the, we have a team. It's not a committee, so it was, we have a team, Deb and Joe and myself. We're going out and, and talking to these people. But this gives us the, you know, the ability to talk to them and say, look, a banner costs $1,000. Maybe if it's not on the, on the parade route, we can reduce that slightly or something like that. But we can now go and say, if you can give us $200 upfront, because that's what it costs. The, the banner is very honest, it costs around $170, $168, $170. Littleton Light Department is, is doing all the, you know, the work on it. So basically, what we're saying now is, look, if you can give us 200 now, 200 in April, 200, we don't care when it comes in next year. But this gives us the ability, and that's what we're using the 50,000 for. And it is, and it is absolutely great. It, it is fantastic.
Let me just remind you.
Yeah, go ahead.
The 50,000 came from the town, not from the Board of Selectmen.
That, that's correct.
Barney was great enough to find it, so you, our, your thanks to us is actually to the entire town.
To, to the whole town, the Finance Committee, to Barney, to, to everybody, certainly, yes. But your support was, was very, very, very important to it. So from that standpoint, we're having, you know, financial, you know, the ability to, to go and raise money is tough today. It's, it's, it's not easy, you know? But I think we, we have some, some real good things, some, some people are coming out of the woodwork, basically with some, some things. Joe came up with one, and I don't want to get involved in specifics, we're still talking about it. But we're given, you know, we want to be able to, to give the businesses the bang for the buck. In other words, we are going to come out with two, two brochures. One in March that will be distributed through the, your Electric Light Bills. And one in March that will give a quick overview and name all the, the donors that we have up to that point. Then there will be one coming out just before the parade and the fireworks, which is the big event, the September 6th event. That will be, be coming out probably in the August, but it'll be the July bills, but it'll, it'll come out in August from the Electric Light Department. And they will, that will have everything on it that, that we have. We, we are looking for, and we think we have them, we, five $20,000-plus donors. That's the key. That's, that's, that's the, that's the key. We, we think we have them, we've got to work, we still have to do a little more work on them, okay? Sometimes you have to back away a little bit and, and come back. So we think we're, we think we're in very good shape from the financing, but, but that is naturally one of the, the biggest things we have. And has anybody got any questions relative to financing? That's, you know, I'll be glad to answer anything that I can. Memorabilia is the other thing, and you see it here, these are the first, probably the first times you've seen the cups that we've, that we've had. We have made an arrangement with My Town Sports, My Town Sports, which is right next to the post office between the Baptist Church and the, and the post office. And they are going to handle our memorabilia. This is great because we are all volunteers. And we, at first, we're talking about the Dunn Building, which is at the corner of Adams and Stevens Street, and, and doing that. We're still going to use that, but only as a facade. We're only going to put a banner up in it, we're going to put memorabilia in the windows and things like that. We, we got involved in all sorts of insurance things and, and everything else, so that's all we're going to do. We will only go into that building when John Dunn is with us, which is fine. And, and put up banners and, and put up the various things we do, because that's a great spot. Everybody coming down Stadium Street stops there, they're going to see it. It's a, it's a, it's a real great spot. From the memorabilia standpoint, we're going to do, anything that has our logo on it will be done through the friends of, of the 300. They are going to, they're going to handle that, which is, which is, which is great. Anything that are strictly banners, the fans and the various things you see, that is strictly My Town Sports. We will help them with the marketing, but that is strictly theirs. They will provide that inventory as, in, in opposition to what we're providing in terms of the memorabilia. They will do all that and take, take care of that. And we have, we'll come up with a couple of new things, and nobody else has seen them because I just picked these up today. But these are, these are flags that we will be involved with. But this is, this is a, this is a, this is a, this is a flag that you can see with the thing. And then the small, then the small flags that will be in statues that you can put on the lawn or things like that. There was one thing that I have been asked to do by a few people, and that is, they would like to have the seal of the town of Littleton on flags. Now, that's over and above, that's beyond us. And I would like your input into if you would like us to market, to have available the flag, the, the seal, the blue seal. I, I'm sorry, I don't have one. We all know what it is. The, the blue seal on flags similar to this. And that would be up to, up to you people, not, not us. This is ours. That, that would be up to you people.
To produce and, and sell.
Right.
All right. Well, if you can give us some information on it, you know, where the cost is, I don't know, I'd, I'd hate to.
The, the cost wouldn't be anything to the town.
Oh, okay.
We would, we would handle, just as we're handling, handling this, it will be all, most of it is going to be by order.
Okay.
In other words, we're going to say, you know, these flags are available, and if you want them, they're going to be delivered April 15th, I'll just use, use the date. You have to order them by April 1st and pay for them by April 1st. So that there was no inventory, inventory problem. But I, you know, it's not a call to, to use the, the, that. And that's what I'm looking for, the Selectmen to say, fine, we, we can do that and give us authority to do it.
With your trademark rights or your.
Whatever, whatever, I don't know. Keith may know more about what we have to do and that, but.
Say yes.
Say yes.
Yeah, the Selectmen can exactly do it. You can probably do it even if you didn't ask them.
Right, yeah. So feel free, if anybody wants it, then.
Okay, thank you.
Talk to Jack.
Thank you. Okay. So, you know, those are the two areas now where we're open to questions, you know, I've got a bunch of the members here. We're open to questions, whatever, whatever you might have to, to ask us, what's going on?
Yeah. Just one thing I've, I've been impressed with is the number of people that are coming out that you see, you'll see little emails or posts or something from people, well, I didn't even know they were involved. So I think there's a lot of people coming out of the woodwork to help out with this, and I think it's going to make it a great event. But if the, if the members of the committee want to stand up for recognition and identify themselves, say, maybe say what subcommittee they're on, so that people might know who to get in touch with if they're in, if they'd like to do anything, so.
Great. Robin, why don't you, why don't you start?
I'll start.
Yeah, you have to start, go ahead.
20 years in front of a bunch of second graders, you can stand up here.
It's different than me. I'm Robin Sewell. I'm looking for help for the picnic. You'd like to come down and help with that. That's on July 12th. I'm on the General Committee, I'm on the picnic committee. I'm on community outreach and publicity.
Very good. Thanks. Millie?
How do they get in touch with you, Robin?
I'm in the phone book. They can, you can always call the, go to the email, you can contest on the website. We're, we're all interactive, so, you know, they come in and our person that's in charge of coordinating out to the right person will get it to us, so.
Millie?
Hi, I'm Millie McGovern, and I'm on the original committee, and I am in charge of the laser for the parade committee. So, any questions?
I know, I've been hearing a lot of good things about the parade. That's going to be a heck of a day.
I've had questions about antique vehicles and if people want to, I think it's Badger? David Badger is the antique vehicle contact, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We have a lot of surprises on them.
Yes, we do.
Ann?
Ann Himmelberger, I'm sort of an ally on the committee. I am actually representing the Historical Society that started quite a few years ago to start working on the history of Littleton. And we have a very enthusiastic, talented group of people, and we are pretty much on target to get the book ready and to sell later in the summer. And I hope you all go to sign up for a copy.
Thanks, Ann. Mary?
Mary Dugan, I'm on the 300th Committee. I'm also the picnic and work with Robin on community outreach. So if you have any picnic questions, we're looking for great sunny weather.
That's, that's the original committee. Now, we have a couple of subcommittees here. First of all, Sue Cummings from the Legacy Committee.
I'm the chairperson of the Legacy Committee, and starting in the spring, we're going to be doing, we're going to, you're going to see some changes around town. We're working on some welcome to Littleton things, and that doesn't end, we're working on the common. I'm also the president of the garden club, and so we're working together on some big projects, towns and villages.
And Diane Quarry on the opening and closing committee?
So Diane Quarry, opening, closing, and also the time capsule. So we're kind of working with some of the schools, trying to get some essays from the schools so that if we look back 50 years ago, we did the contests back then, and we had four winners, and so we're looking to do same type of thing this year also. If anybody has any suggestions of what should go into our time capsule for this year, we'd be happy to accept the suggestion or an article that you're hoping to put in there. One thing we have decided not to do this year is we're not going to bury it. There's been some issues, so we are going to put it in a safe location where it can be seen at all times, and the only thing you won't be able to see is actually what's inside there.
Thanks, Diane.
And John, do you, from the parade committee?
I, John Barowski, temporary chair of the parade committee. We've invited about 80 different units of different types to come into the parade. We've got about half of them signed up, and we're, we're still getting them to come back. So we've got, we'll put on a good parade for the town.
A lot of people asked the route. Can you just clarify the route for the record?
Route is basically from St. Anne's, Littleton High School area to IBM Street, down King Street.
Reverse from there, we're early.
Right.
That's where we're reversed, yeah.
Yeah. Where here's the two areas, the stage, one is St. Anne's parking lot and, and the high school driveway, the stage, the parade.
And the viewing stand and all the.
Reviewing stand will be over by the Baptist Church and, and area, right by the common area.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Thank you.
I have a question. So with respect to memorabilia, do you have on your Facebook page advertising for that and perhaps even a PayPal button to link to?
We will have all the, all the necessary links for you to go and buy and do it. And using My Town Sports, it's, it's great because it's credit card, everything else, they're going to handle all that for us. It's, you know, for a bunch of volunteers, to get that load off our back is, is fantastic. And to get it with someone who has the facilities to do all that. And they're going to, you know, they're going to allocate space just to Littleton memorabilia. And we may add more things. We've, we're still working on golf shirts and hats and things like that, so that we will be adding, adding to.
But you can get those things right now. Just stop in the store, you can get your mugs, you can get your fleece blankets, you can get.
They're cut there, Mark.
T-shirts. In addition, they want a set.
Jack, we also have two other people for the parade committee.
Oh, okay.
Deputy Chief.
Okay, go ahead.
Matt King is on the parade committee, and Chief Wodzinski, he's on the, on the parade committee also.
Don't need to hear anything from us, it's going to be an interesting day. We're splitting the town in half and shutting up most of the 495 off-ramps and on-ramps, so it's going to be quite an interesting day.
Yeah, there's.
Some logistical issues we have to work out. We'll be staging crews on both sides, ambulance sazon on both sides of the town and in different areas, so we've got a, got a good working group going, police and fire, so we'll be fine.
Any other questions?
Just one more thing.
Uh, Joe?
You had mentioned the financing part, and how, how big it actually is and how important it is. We're trying to contact as many businesses as possible, but if there's anyone out there that knows a business person who wants to contact us, let us know, because we do make phone calls, but we also work all day too, so to get all this done. I know there's an awful lot of businesses that haven't been contacted, so if they want to contact us, please do so, we'll set an appointment, we'll come to you to meet with you.
Yeah, the, go ahead, John. Excuse me, I don't mean.
No. I should have mentioned a couple of the big units that we've got coming. One of them is a contingent of the Bumbers from Philadelphia is coming up. They actually put off, put in their, it's a day that they have their, their contest, big, you know, the whole unit down there has their contest. They asked to come up to our parade, so I think that's pretty good. We also have the Davey Band, the Northeast Davey Band coming too. And there's a couple other big ones. We got Scott, what's the other one, the firemen?
We get the State Police Bagpipe Band, the Boston Fire Brigade, Boston Western Pipe Band.
Yeah, we've got a lot of, lot of militia units from around the area too, to be there. We've got a lot of floats from in-town people too. That's really what we're looking for, is for people in organizations in town that want to put a float in the parade. It'd be nice to have to advertise, you know, their, their nonprofit organization or whatever.
There's also the possibility of Littleton Colorado sending their high school banner, which they said they'd only send a third out, which is 200 people.
Yeah, we're trying to get in touch with all the Littletons in the United States and see if they can get send somebody.
Deputy Chief, how early can we start setting out our chairs? I know Cheltenham is a little in limit, like two days.
I don't know, they seem to violate that this year. My sister-in-law had theirs a week ahead of time.
All right. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Actually, the Selectmen will be on the viewing stand, so you don't have to worry about it.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jack. I know we talked in depth about Barney going next. Jim, do you have to get out of here for anything? Do you need to go? I didn't know if you had, okay. Cold weather coming. Got people taking care of things, great.
What's that? You're the guy to pay. Oh, yeah, for the, oh, everyone's paying for their, oh, look at that, look at that.
Pay all there.
We're going to shut the camera after this part of the program, so.
Sorry to do that to you, Keith.
Thank you, thank you. Look at that. Look at that, thank you.
What is covered in?
Thank you.
All right. With that, we can go to Barney. You have a presentation. We've been talking a lot about capital improvements and financing, and the big item right now is the, obviously the fire station design, the construction. There's a goal to try to do this all within the levy limit. There's timetables that are out there, and this is a discussion about, I think, capital improvements financing mainly, and it just so happens that the fire station is what we perceive as the next big possibility here, so.
Basically, what I was asked to do was take a look at the current debt service schedule that we have in place now for the next 20 years, and try and figure out, you know, if, if there is an opportunity to fit something the size of like the fire station that we're, we're currently discussing, about a $7 million project, inside the levy limit rather than doing a debt exclusion override. So in looking at the debt service schedule, there is going to be an opportunity arising to place some significant debt in fiscal year 20. And you can see from the graph up there, that's, there's a big drop down from that point. So what I did was, I met with the treasurer, Stephen Udi, and we've looked at this exhaustively to try and figure out how that can be managed and, you know, when design would be done and when debt could be placed. So to back up from that fiscal year, and, and just to give you an idea of what's going on in that year, that's when the Shaker Lane debt service is fully paid off. And in 2023 is when the high school debt service is fully paid off, and those are both the larger pieces of debt inside the levy. So again, in backing up from fiscal 20, when there is some relief, we see that we could do construction in fiscal 17 if we ask the town to authorize construction in 17 and design in fiscal 16, or I'm sorry, design in May of 16. Or, I'm sorry, design in May of '16, which is fiscal '17, and construction in May of '17. And allowing us to, if you look at that, we really don't exceed by, you know, by too much, except for fiscal '21, the level that we're at now, which is about $900,000 in debt service payments inside the levy limit. So that allows us to kind of maintain level status. It doesn't allow that debt service, we don't allow the debt service that's rolling off to go into operating budgets anyway by policy, but it provides some level appropriation. If we did it earlier than that, say, you know, we authorized it a year earlier, you can see in fiscal '19, the debt service spikes up quite a bit. What that would do is we'd have to pay that out of the operating budget. So we'd have to find some relief somewhere else, another department budget, other programs. We'd have to fund that debt service, and that would equate to a reduction. I think we also bumped it up to fiscal '14, and you can see there are a few years where we're over that $900,000 level that we're currently at. So the impact would be exacerbated further. So really fiscal '20 is the year that I have the relief in. So I can't program it inside the levy limit without a debt exclusion override vote until I place that debt service in '20. So fiscal '17 or May of 2016 is the earliest that you could secure a vote for design with the following year you'd authorize the construction in May of '16.
Let's see, earliest we can do it within the levy limit without any tax, which for people watching who may not understand, this is no override.
Correct.
This is all inside the levy limit.
Within the existing operating budget.
No increase in taxes.
Bonnie, does this analysis also presume that we're not buying anything else during this time?
It does presume that there is no other debt service placed at this time, that we are not authorizing any other new debt that isn't revenue dedicated. So it wouldn't count CPC funded debt because that's funded by CPC surcharge amounts, or the cell tower debt, if that were, you know, if there were additional cell tower projects authorized, just inside the levy limit, yes.
So that also further presume that there'd be no school construction, no library construction, no COA in place? Would it include that this would be the only thing?
For borrow?
Would include that probably.
Inside the levy.
Yeah. Now, all right.
Bonnie also had updated some figures to show what our total borrowing is. The, you want to walk us through this?
Sure. The bottom, the red section is the debt service that's authorized and currently placed inside the levy. The green is the debt service that is currently authorized and placed outside the levy. So you can see we have much more debt outside the levy limit, our exclusion votes, which would include the police station, the Russell Street School, the middle school. And those were fairly recent projects, so that's why that level is so high. And the blue is the assumption on new debt placed for the fire station.
Assuming the 2016 scenario.
Correct.
And you also showed us what 2015 looks like in 2014. But the key is that right now, folks are paying, what they're paying in their tax bills is the total. They're paying the red and the green, total $3 million worth is what we pay, but that total amount will be going down over the coming years.
All right. You ready to kick in, Shits?
Okay.
So you went from 2016 and went back two years. What happens is you look at all, I know we don't have the graphs here, as you look at all, we're pushing on a couple of year, another year. I just see everything goes down, you know, '19 and '20 things go down even more. Is there, you know, did you look at that as a way to, or what do you think that would be?
What I looked at is what is the earliest that we could do this? Obviously, going later is going to ease into that scenario.
Yeah, okay.
Better. But we could do it inside the levy fully without any other required votes of town meeting in fiscal, we could start in May of 2016.
So the next step is, we can get this in say, I just want to say before, but it's finding out the operational impact of waiting till 20...
2016.
Yeah, I will, I just want to get that point out, that that's what, I hope you're prepared to talk about. And, but before that, let's just see if the board has any questions.
In this presumption, you were funding it within the levy limit.
Correct.
I have a couple of questions related to that. What other major capital projects have you funded within the levy limit?
Recently, we have not done any borrowings inside the levy limit for long term. We've done a couple of short-term projects inside the levy limit. One of them is the track. That was voted as a debt exclusion. However, in managing the finances and having some additional appropriations available like from snow and ice money that was not spent, we were able to pull that inside the levy limit and not place it for long-term debt. The Russell Street School, we had a small portion of design service for that that we were able to fund inside the levy limit.
So this makes the presumption that should we decide that we want to build a fire station within the levy limit, that every other capital project now becomes one that's outside the levy?
Until fiscal '24, there's a little bit of relief because that's when the high school debt falls off. So there might be a small project that could be funded inside the levy if we're going to maintain that $900,000.
And how many, in the long-term capital plan, how many major capital projects do we have in view or?
There is discussion on the library regarding a new facility or rehab of the existing facility, but nothing has been definitively discussed at this point, but it's out there. There are some improvements to the Shaker Lane School that may be significant. One part of that is the roof. The facility study has also identified some major improvements in outward fiscal years that may need to be looked at as far as financing. But the two that I can think of, you know, off the top of my head, the library and the Shaker Lane School.
How old is that '24?
In the next 10 years.
Okay.
So then if one of these other projects, like the library or repairs to the school or whatever it is, the place for Park and Rec, you know, there's a whole long list of people that would like to make facility improvements. Would they then, by virtue of this, would we be saying that they would have to come after the fire station? Or would we say, no, if you want to come in and go for debt exclusion, we would consider this beforehand?
What I'm saying is that in fiscal '20, we have the opportunity to finance something inside the levy limit. And the fire station was the project that was discussed as being maybe the next big project. But again...
That's what you used as an example here, right?
It's an example.
That's the one that we see as the next one.
But it's a policy choice. The question, the answer to the question is it's a policy choice of if you've only got X amount of borrowing authority within the levy limit and you use it all for one project, then every other project, either it awaits your ability to fund it within the levy limit, which is later beyond...
2024.
Yeah, 2024. Or it's done via a debt exclusion.
We've got so many, what's that? Right, we've got so, we've got so many things to do. I think the point we look at is that, what I think was started by Jim here was to start this analysis of looking at, look, let's do the smartest, see what's coming off. Let's not just go ahead and compound our debt now and start piling on, is to say, let's look at this as the project right now that we have.
Well, I think, you know, my line of questioning comes down to, well, are we getting ourselves into a jam because we're pushing off a lot of needed capital programs? We've identified this as, we seem to have identified this as a priority that needs to be done. And we've sort of hemmed it in with the idea that we're going to do it within the levy limit. And, you know, maybe the discussion ought to be a little more broad-based in, you know, how do we want to fund it? And how that does impact the rest of the town and the rest of the projects that come up? Because what I see is conflict. People that are saying, oh, well, our project won't be considered for years and years and years. And they're all needed projects. We should be tackling them one by one, and we end up in a situation where we're doing them all and we're putting off spending the money now only to spend twice as much later.
That's not true though.
Yeah, I don't get that. You don't spend that money, spend twice later. Explain that.
Not only that, but we're talking about standing, doing a project that's been on the forefront for the past three years, four years, and now with the increase in staff even brought it to the forefront, even closer to the forefront. No pun intended. What we're trying to do here is to not, number one, blow up on our taxpayer base, you know, ask the taxpayers to increase their tax bills every year. We have the ability to do it inside the levy, so we don't increase taxes. If there is any contingent in town that wants to come before this board and say, I have a project that I'm near and dear to, and go through the process of getting a Prop 2.5 override to get that project complete, and this board and the townspeople support it, it's going to happen. So we're not restricting anybody from coming forward. We're not telling anybody, don't come forward.
I think telling them that you're not raising...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, he's talking to these...
What we're saying is, we have a project that has to be done. We ask, can it be done within the tax levy? The money that's collected out of all our taxes, I got my tax bill. I don't like it. I don't want it going up anymore. Bonnie comes back and says, here are the options. Here's the soonest we can do it within the levy, within our means, within our budget, within the money we collect from everybody in this town. Here's how we can do it without going up on taxes. Again, anybody that wants to come before this board, any organization that wants to come before this board and then go before the townspeople and say, I want my project done. Here's how much it's going to cost. Here's how much the Prop 2.5 override is going to be. And the townspeople say, we agree. We say yes at town meeting, it's going to go forward.
But in essence, what you're saying is that this is our project and the rest is somebody else's.
No, Alex, I started this by saying...
Because if you, let me finish my point.
I thought you would.
If we focus on this and doing it within the levy limit, that's great. But we have all these other important things that are coming along. And to say, well, we can build a fire station, we'll increase the taxes, we're not going to increase your taxes, that's not, that's not really a correct statement because we know we're going to have to do something for the library. We know we're going to have to do something for other people. Let's, and so let's not give people the false sense that this isn't going to cost. It is.
We're not giving them, we're not giving them the false sense this is not going to cost. What we're doing is we have, we have coming down the pipe, the pipe, whatever you want to call it, we have significant capital projects. So far, I've heard fire station, I've heard Shaker Lane, I've heard library, and then there's also been talks about COA and Park and Rec. Right now, the one that is right in front of us, that seems to be the highest priority, is the fire station. This is, and that's what was used in this example. Bonnie, maybe to allay Alex's concerns a little bit, is there anybody else, any other department coming down saying, we need something built today? We need, this is our project that we want financed?
The only project that I know of that is in process and in discussion is the library. I have talked to the library director, and he said they're actively flushing it out, but they're not sure what year it's going to fall into. I'm sure the request will follow in the next five years, but I don't know where.
But he hasn't come here off every day and trying to say, hey, let's, how does this affect the library?
No, they are going through the study phase right now, and they will come back.
They have a lot of things to look at, so they have to look at whether they're going to stay in the same building, whether they're going to rehab, whether they're going to look for another building. And so there's a lot of steps to take that the fire station has already taken to get to that point.
What may be helpful is to identify, and I have the figures available, the next issue of debt that could be made, maybe the next significant amount. So in fiscal 2024, you know, I said in fiscal '20, we could issue about $7 million in debt. In fiscal '24, we could issue about $3 million in debt, over 20 years, with the assumptions of the same rates as today. I also took a look at excluded debt. So if you, we used the fiscal 2012 debt exclusion limit as the threshold for pain. That's when everything hit. That's when the police station hit, the Russell Street School debt hit, that's when the bills, you know, went up significantly in a year. So using that as the level, when's the next point that you could issue like a fire station? That would be fiscal '24. So the debt service that we issued back in 2008 doesn't decline enough until '24 to do another significant project. So really fiscal '24 is, would be the next date that something could be looked at.
On December 5th, we were given a memo by you where you outlined three options. It appears to me that this memo and the documents for tonight relate to just option number three. Would you be willing to share your analysis on options one and two as well?
Sure. What I did in those options was tried to provide some measure of combination of inside and outside the debt, I'm sorry, the levy limit for debt service. I would just preface that, those whole scenarios with that they require, they assume that a future town meeting will vote in the way that I want them to. And those are some strong assumptions. I can't predict what a future vote of town meeting is going to do. It assumes that debt service reductions that are rolling off now, $80,000 a year somewhat, would be allocated into the capital stabilization fund and saved, and then used in a future year to fund the debt service on the fire station when issued, to kind of mitigate the process. It also makes some assumptions that we might have a little bit of snow and ice money remaining and that the future town meeting would vote to put that into the capital stabilization. While that might be likely, it's something that I just, I can't predict definitively whether a town meeting would do that. So if all of those things went into play, you may be able to authorize the debt earlier, and we would work diligently to keep that inside the levy limit. However, we would need a debt service, a debt exclusion vote in case we couldn't, in case something happened. Snow and ice was ridiculous for the next, you know, five years, and we spent more than we had budgeted. And we would need to secure that debt exclusion override vote, which would mean that there's the possibility that in any given year, that there would be an amount above what we're paying now on the exclusion portion of the tax bill. Again, the goal was to try and keep it all in, but you'd still need to have the vote abolished.
But that's exactly what we did with the track.
That's exactly what we did with the track. This presentation to you tonight does not require a debt exclusion override vote. So there would be no ballot vote required to affect this. And the earliest that we could do that would be fiscal, May of 2016. So does that, do you want me to get into a little more?
No, I think that it probably makes sense for us to have Chief Wodzinski give us an idea of what waiting till 2024 would be like for services in town.
Yeah. I just want to say for right now, I think, just want to address Alex's concerns a little bit. This isn't like taking a portion of the, I mean, maybe just taking a portion of it, but it doesn't mean anybody else isn't getting funded. This is doing something diligent. This is a good, strong plan, not piling on the debt. And, you know, we have these plans and, you know, something will have to go outside the levy limit at some point, it sounds like, if we have a couple of more major projects coming down. So what we're doing here is we're trying to get things inside the levy limit, not increasing taxes. The other option would be to take this outside the levy limit, increase taxes now when we really don't have to, and then reserve this for a project that may or may not happen in the future that will have all this stuff, all this, these funds sitting inside the levy limit. And if you have funds sitting inside the levy limit for a couple of years, they could get pulled out and get put into, you know, the cap plan or something else, and then they wouldn't be there when we wanted to build something. So I think using the money when we have it for projects that we have seems to be pretty sound fiscal planning.
I think, I think part of my point was, and perhaps I didn't make that clear, is that we're pushing this all back a little ways. And as we push back and we make the assumption, well, this is our, this is our planning priority. I think everybody has said, you know, I don't think anybody's disagreeing that we have to do something about the fire station. But if we push it back to that far down the road, then my concern is aren't we naturally pushing everybody back that far down the road? And whether we're, in the long term, actually harming ourselves? Because each one of these projects we push back, we all know it, history tells us, the price goes way the heck up. And we're paying more, undoubtedly we'll pay more in interest, we'll undoubtedly pay more in construction costs and all those things. I think what the discussion has to happen is that, all right, we've said this is important, but we really need to hear about what those other projects are that we need to calculate into this. And then decide whether we want to start with something now, start with something later. But you just brought up a point that works. Maybe, maybe we start with this under the assumption we might have, you know, under one of Bonnie's models, that we might have the ability to offset the initial design costs or something like that, and start to look at that, further point out... costs or something like that, and start to look at that further point out, when the library or other projects will be much closer to something we're gonna actually have tangible numbers on.
There's no one here but the fire department. I mean, that's--
There's no one, I think Bonnie made the point, there's no one banging down the door.
No one banging down the doors. The fire department's here--
If I can, I've been quiet this whole time, it was that, the, the town has stepped up as a town, as a board in general, to get things done that needed to get done in the, in not too far past, wasn't too long ago, we didn't have any of this. So when things have arrived on the scene that has to be done, then the town did it. And not just the board, but the town got together and, and said, we needed a police station, we needed the track, we needed repairs done at the school system. I think the same thing would happen right now. I think what you have here is a plan that's, that's responsible, but it doesn't preclude that something's not gonna come up in the future, that we do have to build or maintain something in, in the future. This is just a plan that, if we, a plan to try to keep the taxes down and try to do it in the, in the planned process. But once again, along the way, if something pops up that needs to be done, it'll get, it'll get done. And maybe at that point, taxes will have to go up.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's, it's as simple as spending within your means. That's the bottom line.
My, my only concern is that if the fire department is funded inside the levy, then there might be a mindset of, well, I don't wanna buy a library, 'cause that's outside the levy. Like, this was a bargain, 'cause it was inside the levy, but anything else would be seen as being extra and additional and excessive, and perhaps people would feel reluctant to vote in for those things, because this came inside.
Well, I think it's hard to gauge. I think it's a, it's a, it's something that we should, something to consider, but I also, I don't know, it's hard to gauge. You know, you can't, they can't speak for every voter, but it's hard to gauge. I don't know if anybody says, I don't want something, 'cause we just, yeah, I guess there might be that, I don't want some, we just, we're still paying for that darn this, you know? How can we afford anything else?
I mean, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a great point, but how do you know? I mean, if you had the little crystal ball to be able to say that that will or will not work, pull it out.
I just keep it for really special occasions.
I mean, you know, it's a, it's a good valid point, but, you know, it's, it's tough to sit here and think about the future.
And, and we have--
And say, yes, it would, or no, it wouldn't.
And there's so, there's so many impacts. I mean, there's gonna be, you know, eight years, it could be a totally different board, you know, totally different town, totally different dynamics, so, yeah, I, yeah, I think it's, it's something to think about, but I think we're doing the, I think we're doing the right thing right now.
I think--
Yeah, I do wanna get, I have one question for Bonnie before we get to the chief.
Okay.
And it's gonna help us look at your question. What's the move-in date on this? So what's his date to move in approximately?
Um, I think I heard--
Because we've talked about financing and things, you know, when--
19, I thought it was--
When does he get to move in?
I had, let's see, yeah, May 2020 would be--
Fiscal 19, fiscal--
Fiscal, May of 19 is when I place the debt service, so the project must be completed by then. It can be completed before then, but I need to place the debt service by, by May 19.
Five and a half years in the current situation. Take us down that road.
So currently, on a yearly basis, we pay six grand in rental for the trailer. A couple of things that we'll need to look into if we decide to put the project off a bit more. One will be the roof for the rear station. Originally, there was 50 grand set aside for that. There were some issues with, with getting that done, so that would, that would need to come back up to, to be addressed, as well as, there's some door issues. But depending on when it falls, we could, you know, potentially make things stretch, or they may need to be repaired. So, I mean, in the long run--
I'm working on both. I know you're talking finance, so I'm working on operationally.
Yeah, so, operationally, I mean, as we, you know, as we move forward, currently, we have the around-the-clock coverage, they're in the trailer, that's limited at two. If we need to, if we're lucky enough to get the grant or expand on our staffing, we'll need another, another trailer for some additional space. But moving forward with that, one of the concerns with the project, correct me if I'm wrong, but as we move up, for every two years, it's just under $1 million of increased cost with the rate of inflation--
For the building?
For the, for the new construction. That was in speaking with Correll, maybe a little bit less than that.
It's an unknown.
You should talk, I mean, one, you're talking in, really, 12%, 12, goes up 12% a year?
They were estimating about seven.
Yeah.
So, from year to year.
Okay.
So that would be, you know, increased costs, that would also be something to, you know, I guess--
Monitor.
Yeah, exactly. That'll be in your, your ball field there with the levy limits and stuff. You know, so as far as that, I mean, we'll continue to keep plugging away and selling the project, but, you know, as far as other challenges within the facility, we'll continue to, you know, live within our means. There's nothing major that's going to require us to, you know, move outside of our trailer.
The five years, I mean, can you live, the way you're living right now, services this town, with the amount of folks you have for the next five years and the conditions you have, that's--
As long as our staffing doesn't expand at all, then we'll, you know, we'll maintain in the facility that we have. That's not our goal. Our goal is to increase our staffing, to better serve the community.
Discussion for another day.
I'm just saying.
Right. I guess, and I, like I said, I, it's all about safety. I mean, living within your, your means, if that's gonna put anything, any, make anything less safe, I mean, you know what's going on in town with the growth and things like that.
Absolutely.
So maybe we need some--
You know, we're--
I know this guy's calling, but I want a real--
This project has been somewhat in the works for, God, over the last 10 years. Actually, it started when Chief Kelly began the police station. There was preliminary design for a fire station down there, so this has been going on for quite a few years now. Are, currently, for fire apparatus, we have to custom-design apparatus to fit in the building. That's a concern. That costs us money. In the next three years, we have, next year, we're going for a new rescue pump. The year after that, we're going for a new ladder truck. That ladder truck's gonna be 30 years old. So we need the appropriate facility to house this equipment. So that requires space. We're, space is at a premium right now.
And you have to do that with new ambulances.
That's why we had to put the addition on, just to, just to house the ambulances, to fit them in the building. So, you know, that all comes at a cost. So we continue--
And that cost us now, that you can fit your two new ambulances, they're in our building with the new doors and everything.
What about the new ladder trucks? I mean, are they that much bigger, taller, wider than the current ladder trucks?
They're bigger. They are all bigger.
Will they fit out in and on our doors? Your doors?
They should.
Okay. Right. So they shouldn't be as much customized?
Right.
Okay. I guess the other concern is, I don't wanna put on a roof and carry around $50,000. Roof in five years, if that's what you're saying.
Exactly. That, that is, that's gonna happen. You know, whether, whether we spend a couple grand in tarp, in just tarp, for a couple of years, that would be doable. But if we're talking five to six years, eight years, we're gonna need to do a roof. I can tell you, there's a lot of shingles on the ground. So it's, we're just, we're on borrowed time for the roof. And in the doors, the doors are in very poor shape.
On the back building?
Yeah, exactly.
Of the garage, we call it.
We'll also need some new front stairs on the main building, but--
Well, you need that anyway, don't you?
Exactly.
Yeah.
We had to actually bump out the back station when we rehabbed the ladder truck--
Saw that it would fit.
Yeah, first, because it wouldn't fit.
All right.
Couldn't bring it up. I have one quick question for Bonnie. The calculations that you have for fitting within the levy limit, does that include a calculation for expected price increases over that period of time?
Yes.
Any, any other thoughts? I mean, to me, it sounds like policy, I don't know, a sound financial policy, I don't know, you know, where we go from here. I think that, you know, I, the roof's not falling, and, you know, if we don't build it, it doesn't sound like anybody's gonna be any less safe in town, and, you know, if we put it off, it's financial policy. So I think, do we wanna have another discussion another time to further try to make some decision? I mean, and how do we secure that? I mean, it's almost like locking up debt, you know, five years from now. Can, what if, you know, what if another board wants to do something else, right?
It's a town meeting authorization, and any placement of debt is required.
Right. So even though we say we're gonna follow this path now, two years, there could be a different board here, and they could take another path.
Well, I think it's a, it would, it would be a fairly standard procedure if this board voted to adopt its own policy statement of this, that you wanna, you know, that in reviewing this financial plan, that it's the goal of this board of select, that the, that a certain timetable be adhered to for the design and construction of the fire station project. I think that's an important starting point. Then you, then you get buy-in from the finance committee to that, to that schedule. I think it will be very important for us to make sure that we're having a macro-level discussion with the school committee about how the, you know, the budget pie gets divided up, so that we're all in it, so that, I mean, we've, and I think that that's a legitimate way for this board to, to take its action. You can't deliver on a vote of a future town meeting until you go and get it. But all of the fiscal planning that we do is, in a way, speculative. It's--
Right.
This is how we think the, the financial affairs of the town should be run, here are our goals, and having those written policies in place is, you know, is, is an important starting point. So--
Okay. All right, why don't we put that on for, maybe what, the first meeting in February? Something like that?
I'm ready to make a motion, if you'd like.
Do we adopt this now?
Because--
We've heard everything. Has anybody got any other questions, concerns? I mean--
No, I think I'd just like to see it all written out, and something that we can sign or, you know, adopt something formally, so, you know, a policy. That's my only hesitation, just to get it right out there.
Okay.
Or if you wanna say, vote this and have them to put, you know, to be followed up in words, and then we can just accept at that point.
I think, I think as Keith stated, let's get a vote on the table, and then it gives the finance team, along with the finance committee, to come back with a definitive schedule based on our vote tonight.
Well, that's the other thing, do we wanna make a move without talking to schools or finance? You know, do we wanna, you know, will that seem to be, you know--
There's only so much in the levy--
Well, I know--
--that we're talking about.
But just some sort of advance notice before we make this policy? I'm just trying to play devil's advocate, I'm not disagreeing. I just, you know, I didn't think we would do it tonight, I, that doesn't mean we can't. I just thought if we came up with a written policy, we can drive, we can circulate it for, you know, to the other departments to, you know, to finance the school, just to let them know ahead of time.
Well, this is, this is--
I don't know.
This is a vote of the board of what we just talked about.
Yeah.
You know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a affirmation of--
It's a statement of your goal. I mean--
Yeah.
Finance committee has been asking you for your budget priorities, and it seems to me that you just came up with maybe your top priority for--
Well, that's fine, all right. It just sounds like something, like, it sounds like a big, it sounds like something big I didn't expect to do in, you know, one meeting.
It's a, it's a, it's a policy decision, you know, and we're making a statement--
Yeah.
--to the department heads, the fire chief, and the, and the townsfolk, that, you know what, we've heard the discussion, we've been to all the open houses, we've heard from the townspeople about the fire station, we've heard the financing bit now, now here's our vote.
But don't you think we should make that as part, part of a comprehensive discussion about the capital priorities and the capital plan?
Number three.
I mean, we've, we're gonna hear more about capital priorities as we go through there, and in all fairness, you know, we should look at the whole thing and say, okay, this is, this is what we've decided to do. And, and if we say at that time, we'd like to do the fire station, you know, find a way to do the fire station within the levy limit as part of the big picture, you know, then, then I would look more to that than just, you know, plucking out a vote right now and, and saying, all right, we're gonna do the fire station, and it's a priority, but--
I'll make the motion.
--it will be down in the levy limit.
In all fairness, making this decision now and making, makes the next discussion that much easier.
My, my concern is that Bonnie's memo from the 5th of December had her option two as the staff recommended option, where in, there was some inside and some outside, and the exposure was only a couple of years of the outside. I see our staff, especially our finance team, as having done an excellent job for years and years, and if they're recommending option number two, I feel like we've had a whole lot of discussion relative to option number two, so that we can weigh option number three against the, the one that they're recommending.
Option number two, the, the staff recommended option, did have the assumption that we would take the debt service that's retiring and put it into capital stabilization, and then use that to fund the fire station project as we go along. That requires vote of town meeting to both put it into stabilization and then take it out. So if something happens along the way, you know, that, that might not be the end result if, if somebody wants to use that capital stabilization funds for, for another project, for example, or if something happens, if there's an emergency or something, something happens and the money needs to be appropriated elsewhere. It also would require, and, and we kind of looked at it almost like a benefit, but it would require a ballot vote. And we viewed that from a finance staff perspective as getting a sense of the whole town. You know, that's a board discussion.
So, I was--
Yeah.
So, to do it this way with option number two permits construction to begin earlier, and would save us, over the course of five and a half years, close to $3 million of construction costs, which are estimated to go up?
It could, if, if the other votes fell into place, as we recommend.
Right. So theoretically, this board could adopt a policy to encourage that option number two be seen by the voters as an incremental and thoughtful process in order to have the project happen earlier, and to save on millions of dollars of construction costs, which are being put off, to go with option number three.
It is, it is an option that, that can be considered and, and would be viable with the subsequent votes.
So would--
It's recommended by the financial staff, which has kept our town healthy.
Well, what's, what, is there a recommendation granted that that's, given that that's dated November 5th, it's January 5th, right?
December 5th.
5th to 6th? December 5th, and it's January 6th. Is there, in this additional analysis, you and Steve looked into it, is there any further recommendation? Or do you--
If, if you wanna guarantee that it can be done inside the levy limit with no subsequent votes required, then we, then the option that you have before you tonight is the option to take.
If we wanna do it earlier, without guaranteeing getting it done because of the additional votes--
Then you'll need debt exclusion.
--then we wanna go option two.
Which would require debt exclusion override, and may incur an additional increase outside the levy limit to the taxpayer, if everything doesn't line up.
In, in each case, how many times does the voter get to weigh in on this? Between option two and the one we're discussing tonight?
Three times. We have three times with--
Well, with the option tonight, twice. Once for design, once for construction, you'd need, you'd need town meeting votes, two-thirds both of those times.
Right.
The other, you'd need those plus whatever program amounts, if you're putting aside, you know, if you're voting to move money into a capital stabilization fund or move it out, then those are additional votes that would be required.
And a ballot.
But, but, right, and the ballot question, in, in the, in the option two from the last meeting. The main difference was that, and what, what we were hearing from the discussion that took place on December 16th, you were looking for, you were brought a staff recommendation which said, well, you know, following our policy, in order to take on a big project, while we still have outstanding debt, the only way you can do it is with the debt exclusion. And, and a way to mitigate, so, number one, you have to have the ballot question, and there are other measures, but there are other measures that could mitigate the actual debt service pay. The, the feedback we got was, "Well, let's see what, you know, that still requires the debt exclusion, it would still require taxes to go up. Show us what the option is where that doesn't happen." So we can look at it, kick the tires, see what, see what the ramifications are. And that's what Bonnie's brought tonight, that it's the, it's the wait until we have, we can pay the debt in 2020. So, by proceeding with the design in 2016, rather than this year.
But that also presumes we're not having other major projects happening in that timeframe?
Right, we don't have any.
I think that's a safe assumption, based on what we're hearing tonight. I'm not saying there's nothing going to happen in the total, in total loan of the, that we're paying off the fire station, but there's nothing, there's no, there's no competing capital project at this point. Like I said, I hate saying, I hate when you guys, I hate when everyone else repeats themselves. We have numerous projects coming down in the next 10, 15 years, or that, within the time. How long do we finance these for? 20. So we've got a few projects coming down, and there's going to be even more coming into the tail end of this project. We can't even foresee right now. Something's going to have to be done outside the levy limit. Right now, we have a large, very important project that can be done inside the levy limit. I think waiting is kind of a tough, tough bite of the apple to take, because of the operational concessions, but I think waiting to, waiting to incur more debt before you, until you retire debt is pretty sound. And Jim, just the reason I first was surprised at your motion tonight was because I didn't think we'd be ready to take such a, you know, such a big step, you know, tonight, but I think if we discuss it, and we're ready to make that statement now, and then get feedback from, from...
I mean, people are looking for direction from us, and the way they see direction from us is by our stance, either it's affirmative or negative. I mean, if we want to move forward with this, I mean, don't you think we should at least say move forward, or, you know?
Yeah, I just expected, originally I expected the process to go further. Jen, I'm sorry, I see you shaking your head. Are you against?
I'm concerned about 7% construction cost increasing over the next five and a half years to attach another close to $3 million on what is now a $6.6 million project.
So your concern is not doing it through this process? Your, your concern is not doing it by option three, your process, you're going, you're prefer to do it under option two?
My sense is that option two is a better option, because it is recommended by the people who look at these numbers day in and day out.
Well, but that was given the direction at the time. So, given different direction...
It was. At the time, there was, there was no direction on getting, getting it guaranteed inside the levy. It was, how could we maybe finance this? It was very, it was much looser. You know, while I think option two could be a successful option, it does rely on some variables. I can't control, I can't guarantee, and I can't bind a future town meeting to a vote. Even if the intent is to take all debt service reductions and put it towards the fire station project, I can't bind a future town meeting to do that. You know, it, I can recommend it, but I can't bind it.
The town meeting will decide.
I, I guess my response, just to talk this through, is that you're rolling the dice by doing it option two. And that's not, you know, to me, sound financial policy. If you're going to take a chance at all these town meeting votes, it's going to be at least two or three to move the money into the, into the, and, so it's going to be like two or three in, and then probably one out, and then it's going to be, you're going to have to also get the override option, and you're going to have to get that override, so you have the ability to do it outside. So you're looking at a major two-thirds override vote with that moniker on it, override, and then you're looking at two other votes, and then that, two or three other votes to get the money into this capital stabilization fund, and then you're looking at this board to keep it in that fund and not use it for something else, and then move forward. So, that's why I disagree with option two.
The memo from, from December, I wanted to outline the potential opportunities, and in looking at all the potentials, yes, that was the option that, that Steve and I looked at, and with the other finance staff, and recommended. With the clarification that if we need to do this inside, and only inside, and completely inside, and guarantee that, you know, we don't need to rely on future votes, the option tonight is, is the option.
The recommendation?
Yes. If that's the board's direction, to do it guaranteed.
Yeah, right, you can't really give a recommended option. I mean, we gave, we give you direction, you give us feedback. There was no direction before, and now we're giving you direction, and, so it's whether or not we want to do it under the, you know, under the levy limit, or not.
Right, the, the policy direction that, that the, that the board provides is either that we fund it inside the levy limit or outside, and that if it's inside, it's the option that Bonnie's presented tonight. If you would entertain that all or a portion of it be done outside, well, then we, then we'd be back to the options of the last meeting.
So it's not that the options are out the window, it's just we have to figure out what our priority is. Do we want to do it all inside, or do we want to do it partially? Inside and outside with what I portrayed as rolling the dice?
I, I think option two weighs that, you know, and that, you know, that's what the recommendation was they came up with.
Did you just, wait, I'm sorry, but did you just hear what they said? Do you not listen? Because they just said, that's not the recommendation. That's the recommendation if you're going to do it as soon as possible.
If they don't get direction from us some other way.
Right.
They did their analysis, that analysis is still valid.
All right, so what's your...
So I do listen. Now maybe you should listen.
Okay, what do you have to say?
You know, you spend a lot of time...
Tell me why you like option two, though.
...talking about how this is a kinder, gentler boy, and you keep badgering away, and I'm not going to put up with it.
What have I badgered you, sir? How have I badgered you? Could you tell me how I've badgered you? If you're going to throw that dice, then tell me how I badger you.
What would you do if I said, "Are you not listening to me?" What would you, you'd go, "Alex, I demand an apology."
All right, so there's one example that maybe I badgered. What else? You say I do it all the time. Throw the dice.
So let's finish this discussion.
No, you threw that dice down, then I badger you. Give it to me. How do I badger you?
You just did, I gave you the example.
One, give me something. You say, "I badger you all the time," you say, "I continue to do it."
And we're watching the second example right now.
So, give it to me. So you didn't have this example when you made that accusation, so please back up your accusation.
Can we just move on?
No, this is, no, because he's, he throws these dice out, puts a smile on, and then he, then, then he gets away with it. He makes all these accusations and doesn't back them up.
Absolutely. Can't agree with you more, Mr. Jim.
Now, if you'd like to proceed with, I'll give you the option. Either proceed on telling me how you, how I badger you, or proceed with why you support...
No, I don't want to proceed with that.
Then please proceed with why you support the second option.
I think it's the wisest option. I think, I think the point that was made about millions of dollars in difference is a point that's been proven again and again. The police station went out to be studied, they came up with a price, they said, "Well, you know, let's do something else." They got a smaller station for more money. The fire station is a classic example of, we've been patching that up, we bump it out here, we bump it out there, we worry about the roof, we put off the work on the building, we do all this stuff. We're, we are running the risk of spending a lot more money. If this is a priority for us, then let's have it be a priority. I think option two gives us the best chance for going either way with this. If we can work out the scenarios, we can get started on this project, and maybe we get it under the levy limit, maybe we don't. But, I think we all agree that what we want is a fire station.
I think that's true, and I think also, the one thing that has been pointed out, too, is that going with the option three, if that's the way we choose to go, at least it's a guarantee that that fire station's going to get, going to get built without having something that might happen in the future, that it gets, gets put off even further, and the cost becomes even, even higher. Because if one vote doesn't happen at a town meeting, instead of being finished completely in, in 2019, now we might be, might be talking further down the road, so there's no guarantees on that, that savings of, of funds that way.
There's no guarantees on any of it.
Right.
No, but at least we're, we're pretty much guaranteeing that under the, limit there, the, it's going to get built.
Well, I don't, well, I'm not going to jump on that, but I think, I think option three is the one that guarantees we're not going to raise taxes next year.
And, and, you know, my phone is very busy around this time when those tax bills get mailed out. That's probably the most time I get, the majority of the phone calls since I've been in this position. Why? Why are my bills going up? How come?
And I've said from my first year here, that you don't, you know, when we do the tax classification hearing, that's when it appears that taxes go up, but it's actually May that taxes go up. So, if I can do something inside the levy limit that is a better chance that there's going to be no tax increase to the residential bills or commercial bills, then that's, that's where I'm at.
But I don't agree with that statement, because if we know we're going to have other capital projects, and that we know they're going to cost money. So, just because we're saying, you know, "We can get the fire station under the levy limit," that's, we're, we're looking the other way, if we think that we aren't going to be part and parcel to asking for more money for a library, or whatever it is, outside of the levy limit.
My response to that is...
Not just the fire station, we're looking at it.
I know. My response to that is that I've already discussed that twice, and I've made my point about that, which I believe Bonnie has somewhat supported, and this board has, so I can't, I'm not going to respond to that again, because I'll just be beating a dead horse.
I agree. So, back to my question, you know, I'll be more than happy to make a motion, based on, you know, my, my feeling and my belief, spend within your means, and if the board sees so fit the second, so be it. Vote upon it, I'm okay. But if you, Mr. Chair, I'd be more than welcome to, willing to make a motion.
No reason to wait for my, for you.
All right, here we go. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the schedule of design and build the fire station within the tax levy, as presented by the finance team. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, this motion's been made and seconded to accept the scheduling plan for the fire station funding in May 2016, which is within the levy limit, with, I imagine after this motion, it'll all be put into a better schedule and put into a policy. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained? All right. All right, thank you very much for the, for the debate. We'll now move on to the capital improvement plan, which we're moving on first with Jimmy, Mr. Clyde from Highway.
What do you want to know?
Well, we talked about it a little bit. What we're really trying to do here is, we've asked other departments for prioritization of their, of their capital request, and I know this list is prioritized. We're trying to now get a better idea of what's required. For instance, some of the departments have items that they're very committed, so those are required, and then there's some that are optionally, operationally required, and we're just trying to get a better idea from you. What can, what is the equipment that you must have? What would be good to have, and what might be nice to have? That kind of idea there.
Bonnie asked me to send you a breakdown of that, and I did. I'm assuming you got that? Nothing for us is guaranteed or required by law. I mean, it's all, we're a business that's trying to survive like everyone else, and we're not going away, and equipment makes our life easy. That's why we want it and need it. You know, for us, going down through the first four items, the major equipment, which gets us through, just where we have unforeseen expenses on things, we bid items or get pricing on items a year in advance, and sometimes the pricing isn't exact, so we need a little extra funds for that. Like this year, you get into a heavy winter, you abuse the equipment a little bit more, you need some extra money to fix things. The next thing is our one-ton dump truck. It's a scheduled replacement that we've had. We try to keep our equipment, the one tons between eight and 10 years, depending on how things go. This one's scheduled to be replaced. The next thing is the front deck mower. It's basically a scheduled replacement. We try, again, keep it as long as we can, and we do move them around, because we say, "Oh, it's really not that bad, we can keep it another year," but then it gets to a point where it's, you're putting a lot of money into it, it's not reliable, and we need to rely on it. The next thing is the, the infield groomer. We've had a fair amount of problems with it this year, and we rely on that heavily to, to reduce our workload, because we're prepping ball fields all the time, and if we have to go back to hand raking the fields, it just doesn't work, and it's not going to get done. So it's pretty important, and then you start going down to the other things, and they're, you know, basically nice to have, and we're just trying to improve our equipment.
Well, we've seen crack sealing, it must have, well...
Yeah, that's, there's been a little discussion going back before this. It's, it's really in the road maintenance budget. I'm not really sure, it's just something that gets put in here for discussion purposes.
We break it out because it's something that's been asked repeatedly in previous years, you know, "How much do we spend? Do we plan for this every year?" We do budget $70,000 every year within the roadway budget. We're just culling it out here to show you the amount that we spend on crack sealing. It's a recurring expense, so it's not...
So it's, oh, it's not for equipment, it's for...
The actual crack sealing.
Yeah.
The service. So it is funded in the roadway budget. It's here because it's something that we do annually, and not doing it would be a problem for the ongoing maintenance of the roads, but it is covered under the roadway budget, so it's not an additional amount.
What good is?
So it's not in the capital plan that you have. If you look at your capital plan listing, it's not there.
Oh, okay, so this is, this is all, oh, okay, all funny, okay. So that's not, this is not considered in the cap plan?
It's part of the roadway budget.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, you make it too easy sometimes, Jim, we just draw a line at the groomer. I mean, it's nothing, all the other stuff is really just not operational. I mean, when I hear you're talking about the infield groomer, you're talking about doing something with equipment rather than doing it with people, and then these other things don't have the same type of labor impacts?
No, I mean, like, we currently have a roller, we're trying to upgrade it to a newer model that does a better job. I mean, if the funding isn't there, it's not there. I mean, we're asking for it. You know, we've put a 10-year plan together, if you look out 10 years, it's out there. We do change it by, priorities change over time. I mean, we're looking at a crystal ball 10 years from now, too. You know, newer technology comes in, you know, you said draw a line. I mean, I can't say I have to have it. It's something that we would like to have, and it would do a better job for us.
No, I appreciate the honesty. Does this, at some point, become a must-have?
It will, once the other one's so old that it doesn't work, like our old one, that we had, you know, years ago. It's just newer technology, it does a better job, and then you go into the, you know, "You guys want to improve sidewalks? You need a paver. You don't want to buy it? We want to improve the sidewalks." It's pretty simple.
Anybody else? I've been kind of talking a lot.
With respect to major equipment repair, I see that that's on your budget fires, not on police. Is there reason why something like that's not in the operational budget?
On the police, it's specific to tires and vehicle maintenance, so there is an account, it's a smaller amount, it's $5,000. That is the vehicle maintenance that they use, and they do have an amount within their budget also, but we earmark the tire replacement, because that's kind of a critical component. And on the major equipment and repairs for, for highway and for fire, they have larger and more apparatus that needs to be maintained.
Which are one-time fixes.
Well, and they're, they're larger, I mean, when the, you know, when the transmission goes on one of the, the larger trucks, it's, it's a big issue. This account can only be used for those types of things, whereas if it's put into the operating budget, it can be spent, you know, anywhere.
We talked about that last time.
If something else comes up.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
I just, the only comment about the sidewalk paver, because I know you mentioned that this board has talked about it, and people talk to me about sidewalks all the time. I would suggest that we, if we draw a line, that we also improve that sidewalk paver, but that's my opinion.
Well, I think what we can do is we can at least move it up there, or we can say, move it up, we can move it ourselves up above the, the roller and the forklift, and then see what's left, I think. I think that's your kind of point. If you want, you know, we can try and make it a nice-to-have, and...
So what, I mean, you ask us to put on a 10-year plan, and we only look at one year.
Yeah.
You know, like, we bought our Mack trucks, we told you we'd keep them 20 years, and now we have to keep them 30 years.
Try to keep stuff inside the levy limit, you know? I mean, there's only, there's only so much.
Then don't go to the fire station, then, let me get a couple of trucks. You know, I mean, again, we're, we're a business...
We'll just move it in there, down there with you.
We're a business that's trying to survive, and if, if you're a private business, you make the decision to keep a piece of equipment, and then if it's not working out, you know, you say, "Oh, okay, I got to go out and, and buy that." We're a year to two years out if something like that happens to us, so we're, you know, we're trying to do what we can, and I think everyone does a great job at that. But, you know, we're looking at the tercentennial, we're not going away.
No, and, and you know I've been down the yard a couple times, and looked at the equipment, and I think you do a great job with that. And, I mean, compared to you, I'm, I'm a-blowing, and I'm, you know, now, you know, checking I'm a blow-in, and I'm, you know, now, you know, checking your work. You've been here, you've been working here longer than I've been here, and I think, um, you know, I'm just doing the best I can with the money that we have, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to do another step here. I don't think we've really gone this in-depth into the cap plan as before, and really listened to you and really, and the other departments to try and get this done. So I, I'm just here trying to do the best I can with, with the money that the town has, you know? So, you know...
I, I think it's reasonable, Mr. Che, excuse me, that, you know, Jim, yeah, eventually you are going to need some new trucks. I mean, you've been fantastic coming up with the ideas to do the refurbish and, and to get the extra years, but you're absolutely correct in saying, you know what, we're going to need new trucks, and it's going to be within the next five years, 10 years, or whatever, whatever you deem necessary. So town's got to be prepared for it. And I think that's when the decision by this board will have to be made, you know? Is it going to be a command vehicle for the police or a truck for the department, uh, highway department? Is it going to be a, uh, something with the schools, or is it going to be a sander for the highway department? So, uh, those are decisions that absolutely have to be made, and when you bring them forward, you, you fight for them, too.
And I think that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to look at all the three departments that are under our direction to, so that we can say, hey, well, you know, does, does Jimmy's truck go higher than this, or the sidewalk paver higher than, you know, turnout gear, whatever, you know, things like that. So, just to throw terms out there, not saying I'm cutting out turnout gear. But...
So, Joe asked about the sidewalk paver and moving it up. What are your thoughts on that?
In other words, I'm assuming these are on a list of priority?
Yeah, that's not that we're put in there. It's, um, again, the sidewalks are in pretty poor condition. It's, it's one of your goals to improve the condition, and that's one of the things that would help it. You know, something like that lasts for quite a few years. Um, you know, you could try and rent one or something, but any purchasing, it just makes more sense.
Jimmy, if you were to get everything you had in that list, what is your, is that 108, no, 217,000, is that Bonnie?
Two, yeah.
Two seventeen.
This year.
Two seventeen. Two seventeen.
Anything else? Any other questions for Jim?
Well, Alex had emailed a couple of questions, um, over the weekend, just about how many small dump trucks we had. I was just curious to where you were going with trying to...
I, I was just trying to figure out what that smaller segment of the fleet looked like, and what its age was, and, you know, if, if rolling, waiting a year was going to have a kickback effect down the road because of the size of the fleet, and, you know, you'd be putting these things off too far. Just trying to get a better understanding, and I do appreciate your answers, and, you know. Now, when I send out an email in the, in the weekend, I don't necessarily expect everybody to respond in the weekend, but that's when I have my time to read my package, so... So what I, what I'd asked Jim is, is what, how many of the, of the one-ton type or size vehicles there were in the fleet, and I'd asked a little bit about whether, you know, they were sharing, or if it was seasonal, and, and stuff like that, and, you know, it pretty much convinced me that, you know, it's not something that, that could, there were a lot of alternatives to doing.
Okay. Anybody else?
Good.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Alright, uh, moving on to fire. Do you want to run down your requests?
Well, we're running down, um, it's 15,000 in the major equipment, as Bonnie touched on. Um, you know, that's for significant repairs of, of our equipment. We have a few pieces of apparatus that are getting, uh, quite old, our engine, too, and, uh, our ladder. Our ladder's going to be 30 years old in, uh, next year, two years. Um, so, I mean, and even some of the, um, pump malfunctions that happen in, between any of the apparatus, it's a significant cost of that, so that's what they made the major equipments for. Um, the modular, uh, building, the 6,000 a year, that will remain until a station is built that's housing our, uh, our clock staff. UHF radio system, the $35,000 for that, um, that's actually a, a two-part thing. This is, this is the final portion of the radio upgrade from us going to the VHF to the, to the UHF band, replacing, um, the first part. Last year, we replaced all of the other base stations, um, basically doing the infrastructure. This portion will replace the portable radios and pagers. Um, and also in, was it Bonnie, back in '10, there was $40,000 set aside for matching grant money. Um, also in the spring, that money that was set aside will be reallocated to, um, uh, match up with this.
Finish it.
To finish the project, right. Protective clothing, the $12,000, we're trying to get that into a, a yearly recurrence so that we can maintain the replacement of the gear as the department grows. Uh, there is a shelf life on gear, and if we can get into a decent rotation of replacement, we won't have to come up for large chunks of money, say, you know, $150,000 every eight years. Um, so if we can get on that rotation, that's, that's our goal on that. Uh, number five is replace car nine, my vehicle, uh, with a, the $34,430 for Ford Interceptor. It's basically the same vehicle that the police, uh, will be getting. We're looking at two of those. That's number five and six, um, for command vehicles. Sorry, I'll, let me back up. To replace mine, currently it's experiencing mechanical issues, transmission issues. Um, our mechanic from Miller Automotive, they, it was their recommendation that we look forward at replacing that, um, simply for the, the cost of the repairs exceeds the value of the vehicle.
How many miles are in that now?
Uh, just over 68,000.
Five years old, 68,000 miles, and it's falling apart, and we're going to buy more of the same?
Uh, it's a different vehicle, and it has different operators.
What does that mean? You drive more gently, or you drive more, more roughly?
Beating around the bush, uh, definitely would maintain the, the vehicle, and, uh, without, you know, throwing anybody under the bus, yes, we would maintain.
And that one's been in two accidents.
Yeah, that vehicle has been in two accidents and repaired, and, um, it's beaten.
And these are hard miles, too. I mean, not to, not to take away from Jenna's point. These, I mean, this, you're not going out on the highway in, you know, driving a lot. This is all around town, starts and stops, and get into scenes.
That vehicle, I mean, that was coming from another town. Um, yeah, it, it was, it was rough.
So this was purchased used, I have?
No, this was purchased new when, um, the first one was in an accident. This one was replaced. Um, this one was also in multiple accidents. Um, it's been repaired. This vehicle's beaten, point blank.
Alright, I want to read that then.
Number six was, is the deputy's vehicle. Um, same vehicle. Um, it's the Ford Interceptor. It's, it's basically, it's, it's a lower vehicle. It's a step down from Explorer. It's a little more affordable. Um, currently he's using one of the pickup trucks, and if we could actually, we're, the goal is to get the pickup truck back into the fleet for use. Um, it's part of our fleet reduction plan. I say reduction, yes, we're looking at increasing it by a number. However, um, we're shrinking down the value of the vehicles. If I kind of jump forward a little bit, um, we're looking at replacing our brush truck, which is a $250,000 vehicle, um, by allowing us to put this pickup truck, you know, a $40,000 vehicle back into the fleet, and putting a small skid unit, uh, which is basically a brush, uh, contains water for brush fires, a small tank, small pump. Um, we can operate much more efficiently, more affordable on fuel usage. Um, it's much easier to maintain a pickup truck that gets better mileage instead of a $250,000 brush truck that gets used eight or nine times a year at four or five miles a gallon. Um, so it's definitely easier, easier to maintain multiple, multi-use vehicle. Um, we can be used throughout the year, different, take that tank out in the, uh, in the winter, use it for multi-purpose throughout the winter.
There's, there's a $250,000, what do you call it, a brush?
Brush truck.
Truck?
Yeah, engine three is, uh...
Okay.
And that's the cheapest of our...
And is that, is that going to be able to be sold?
Yes.
In the used market?
Um, what, in speaking with the, the dealers, the best option for that would be to actually auction it off. Um, and the, the market right now, especially up north, um, they anticipate the, the range between 25 and 35,000 for its value. So if I, uh...
Based on that, it'll pay for one of the vehicles, one of the command vehicles.
In conjunction with the, uh, turning that pickup truck back into a brush truck and with a small skid unit, um, I look at number seven, and that is, uh, it's $30,000 for an ATV. Looking at a six-wheel ATV, which also would get a small, um, tank on the back of it, a small skid unit, similar to what would be going into the pickup truck, just smaller version, small pump, uh, water, a foam component. This is a six-wheel ATV that would be able to take out an Oak Hill, um, the power lines, the multiple conservation land, uh, areas throughout, throughout town, and we'd be able to use that for rescues of, I mean, throughout the year, people break their ankles or get hurt out in the woods, and instead of having six or eight guys have to hoof somebody out a half mile, we could actually have a vehicle that would be able to go in to, you know, make that rescue much easier. It would also be available to the PD, um, if they had something going on out in the woods or search, anything like that. Um, so it'd be a multi-use vehicle. And, uh, number eight is actually the skid unit. That's the skid unit that would be going into the, into the pickup truck for 10 grand. That's, that's what it would cost us for that. Um, our last unit is $15,000 for thermal imagers. Um, that's, uh, you know, it would be a nicety. We, we have three thermal imagers now. They are still working. Technology is improving, uh, cost is coming down, so this is an item that, uh, the camera, cameras are old. It would be nice to replace them, um, but if, uh, we don't have that opportunity, they're still functional and, and still working. Um, this is also something that, you know, at the end of the year, if we actually had some leftover operational funds, we could, you know, maybe channel a little bit of it towards and, and replace one camera or something like that, if, if we had to.
So what's the total net? I mean, you're, so you're saying get the command vehicle, the second command vehicle, the 34, and get the brush unit, brush skid unit for 10,000, and you can get rid of engine three at that point, or do you need the ATV to get rid of engine three?
Correct, need the ATV. The ATV and the pickup truck with the skid units, it's kind of a, a package thing. It's two smaller, two smaller units, get rid of the more expensive brush truck, multifunctional, last a long time, uh, definitely cheaper to operate. It's basically our first step at, at a reduction program for more affordable, easier to maintain vehicle.
How big is the ATV just?
Because I don't know what, what it really looks like.
Um, it's a, it's a six-wheel, uh, six-wheel machine. It's, um, four feet wide by six feet long.
Pretty gator?
Exactly, exactly. Slightly, slightly bigger, yeah.
So it comes flat to the back, and you put the...
Comes on a trailer. It has a dump bed on the back, so that we can actually put a small skid tank, um, a skid tank, a little pump with it, and on the side of it, it comes with a med bed, so it actually has a stretcher on it.
No, just going back to these combinations that you have out here. So can you replace engine three with the ATV and the brush skid unit and not the command vehicle?
Um, no. Then, then, so part of the problem, if I was to take the command vehicle away and only have myself, um, currently we both operate, um, 24/7/365. And the vehicles that we take home, we respond to calls on nights and weekends to back up the day staff. Currently, there's only two and quarters, so they'll take that first piece of apparatus out, and we will together arrive simultaneously on a call so that we can qualify as a four-person crew to begin an attack on a fire or begin, you know, some extrication at a, at an accident while we're waiting for the call department to arrive with additional, uh, support personnel and apparatus. So by eliminating one of those command vehicles, um, specifically that pickup truck, and not having, requiring him to respond to the station to get a vehicle to respond, just, um, basically adds a significant delay.
No, but the deputy has a vehicle that responds to that. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, but that vehicle is the pickup truck that would get that skid tank in it.
So my comment about paying for the truck is, uh, just been washed out by the skid and the ATV.
How did...
The, the sale of, well, the, the sale of engine three could potentially pay for the ATV and, yeah, that whole way, that package.
Deputy gets a, a, another vehicle, yeah.
Again, going back to, um, highway department looking to buy refurbished, why do you need brand-new?
Such as?
Such as your brand-new vehicle you're suggesting the town buy for you and for your deputy chief?
We make, are required to see if we can get the most out of our vehicles and make them last until, you know, the longest we can. Um, if we, you know, go new, we're guaranteed. Um, it's an emergency response vehicle. I have, there's a reliability portion in there about having it something that's, you know, new and, uh, in good shape.
Jim, what's your, Jim?
Municipalities get a pretty good discount when they purchase new, because we can buy things a lot cheaper than the general public. Like, we were looking to potentially get a used backhoe or something like that, and we can buy them new cheaper than you can buy a used, um, from a dealership.
So this vehicle off the state bid list?
Yes. Correct.
And if you buy used, you'd be subject to a dealer?
Correct.
Alright, Bonnie, do you have something?
Um, the other item is, generally the warranties are better. We can negotiate better warranties on the vehicle than we can on the used.
Then why such a big vehicle? Why not something like an Escort?
Not going to get anywhere an Escort in three feet of snow.
No, I see, I, I've asked a question. I've been trying to downsize town vehicles. I think we've done it a couple times. I think, you know, there's places that you can and you can't.
That, that vehicle, that interceptor is actually, currently I have an Expedition. Now, there's an Explorer, and this interceptor is even smaller than that. So, um, this is a significant, uh, reduction in size and cost.
And this is the smallest, least expensive all-wheel or four-wheel drive vehicle that's made by Ford?
Yep.
Have you looked at other makers?
This is the vehicle that has the size that will equip, um, that will hold the equipment that we need, that's required for the job.
And on the bid list?
Yes.
So there's no other smaller vehicles on the bid list?
There are smaller vehicles on the bid list, but they will not meet our needs.
That will do, that will do, yeah, that is, okay. So I just want to make clarification. That, you're also restricted somewhat in ma, make and model by staying on the bid list?
Correct.
I just need that, go ahead. So I guess what I'm seeing is, it's almost all or none. Well, in order, in order to do your fleet reduction and replace engine three, you need the, the skid, the ATV, and the command vehicle?
Well, hopefully the skid and the ATV will be canceled by engine three sale. So basically, the, the deputy's vehicle for 34 would, you know, take off the, um, skid and the ATV, because that'll be paid for by the sale of engine three.
And what comes, what happens with the auction?
That's just the wall talking.
The auction item. The auction item, did I go back into general fund, free cash? Where's that going to?
Um, if I actually set up a revolving account for auction items for police vehicles, we could do the same for this instance, for the fire vehicles, and then use it to purchase the new equipment so that...
Okay, so we can directly offset? So, alright, so we're understanding that we buy things out of the general fund, and then we get something sold, and it comes back in in that cash, then we still have, would we basically have additional capital money to spend this year?
If the results of the auction were, you know, more than the 25,000, then we could, we could redirect that for equipment next year, or we could just bring in whatever the auction results were to the general fund. Um, either way, we could, we could earmark it to offset the cost. So there, there is a mechanism.
But again, you can't spend that money before you have it, so you can't, so we still have to budget for the full capital request, and then we get the money back and maybe use it for... But then when we offset it, so the money's available somewhere else...
Well, for an example, with the police, um, vehicles, one year we held an auction, and we had over 25,000, um, as a result of the auction. And the next year in the capital plan, we took that 25,000 and used it to offset one of the police vehicles that was purchased. And, um, so we, we did directly earmark it.
I think, um, I think that's all that is good. Does anyone else have anything? Because I don't think we're going to make decisions tonight. I think we have to take our priorities and look at the whole town priorities at some point, but we wanted to get an idea on that. Okay, if there's no, nothing further. Deputy Chief King?
Well, first of all, I'd like to do a little bit of history of mine there on cruisers. Last year, uh, we didn't operate ten cruisers because we were, uh, under the direction of the finance committee and the finance team here. We were trying to get away from leasing or purchasing cruisers on financing. So there was two reasons for that last year. One was to get rid of... One was to get rid of, pay off all the rest of the leases so that all the leases were done on the cars and everything we now own. It was also a changeover year for Ford, Chevy, and Dodge where a complete redo of the car was going to, was coming. All, all the manufacturers were doing this. So nothing that was in the current cars we owned was going to fit in one of the new cars we bought. If I bought new cars last year and put anything in them, none of that equipment would have fitted into the new cars I purchased this year. So, that being said, originally this year we were scheduled for three fully marked cruisers and one unmarked cruiser. And looking at the plan, I brought that down to two, two fully marked cars. And my plan is to bring the fleet to four working marked cruisers with two held in reserve. Currently we run five fully marked cruisers and one in reserve. The reserve car is used to transport to court for, for other functions. By doing this, we're now going to turn the cars over every two years and keep them under Two of the Dodges that I currently have on the road have been down for over, combined almost two and a half months, just since July 1 this year, in repairs alone. My repair budget is already at almost 85 to 90, I think it was at 90% as of today on the Dodges. And the Fords just hold up better, plain and simple. I'm going back to Ford. I wish I never left Ford, to be quite honest with you. Our Crown Vic does not have the draw on, on resources and the utilities. While we've only had the Ford interceptor utility for a year now, its draw has been great. And I've talked to the other departments that have had them for a year. Acton has had them for a year longer than us and they're finding the same thing, that the Ford maintenance program, you know, as long as you keep up with the maintenance, is better. So, so we brought that down to two cars rather than the three original marked cars that we were going to purchase this year. And that's with full equipment, that's everything, new cages, new light bars, everything that is needed to set up the car, new prisoner, prisoner transports, the drawers for the rear and the whole, so that gets the car fully set up. And then there's the unmarked Ford interceptor which keeps us in the, originally that was scheduled for this year to be, to be replaced, replaces, it goes into, as we call it, the hand-me-down. So what would happen is the chief's vehicle would go down into the detective's and the detective's forerunner would actually, which has got 136,000 miles on it as of today, would actually be, would be rotated out of the fleet. Cars that go into the unmarked fleet tend to last seven to eight years in our raw package. So far, the one that's been tested the longest is the Ford Crown Vic, which is the 2006, which is, was bought brand-new in the unmarked package and is still running. It is not scheduled for replacement for another two years, actually. So what would happen is this year is three cars, next year is two cars, the year after is three cars, and then it goes to two cars for like two or three years until the, until the kickovers hit again of the eight or nine years or depending on mechanics, obviously of the unmarked fleet. Snow tires and tires that was under capital, I was directed to put that under capital three years ago and spent strictly on tires. Typical, the regular cruisers run one set of snow tires every year and typically at least two sets of regular tires every year. That's what they go through, about three sets of tires. And we do get about the stuff on the state bid list, their tires are normally $180 on the state bid list, they're 100, well, they're up to about $120 a tire right now, so that's why they increased to $6,000 for snow tires. As you see, anything below that line came off the, came off the list, doesn't affect the power operations. However, the CyberCom Public Safety Radio Maintenance Agreement, for $10,104, that protects about a $1 million infrastructure of the town, which is all the radio systems for police, fire, highway, it protects the UHF systems. And so that, if we have any radio issues, gives us much, you know, a greatly discounted price. We are going on our third or fourth year now after building the station. We haven't had any major equipment yet, but, you know, you never can tell, it does protect about a $1 million infrastructure. The cable TV and security system maintenance agreements for $11,000. My, after talking with Bonnie, my recommendation there would be, if you were to fund that, is not to fund the maintenance agreement, however, to take the $11,000 and put it in the capital as $11,000 to be spent if there are needs. The system only is protecting about $160,000 system. I think that $11,000 to protect $160,000 is excessive for a maintenance agreement. Personally, we discussed that and it would be better spent to have it in a capital. Again, it can only be spent to protect that system, but I don't think, I think, I think, you know, almost 10% of a system's cost for a maintenance agreement is rather high when you're protecting almost a million dollars for that same $10,000 price for the radio system. And basically everything else, the conference came forward, I believe just by mistake, paying what do we do with inside the infrastructure and get some prisoners from Mr. Carr and as far as...
Two houses in the night, two houses, right?
No, they don't like to stay too long with us. And anything else would, would go forward under, under our frontline budget, not under capital.
So if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, the, so the $11,000 is basically if a camera goes down, keep it in capital, replace that camera?
Correct, correct. I just think, you know, for $160,000 total system purchase, $11,000 compared to that million is rather high, but that was what Bonnie and I had recommended.
What if we don't do the cyber communication maintenance agreement? What happens if we don't do that? Or what could happen?
Well, again, if, if it's, both of them are roll of the dice things. If you don't, if something goes down, we have to find a way to pay for it. I mean, that's, if we lose a frontline radio and it's, it's a $100,000 repair, we have to, have to figure out to how to, you know, how to pay for that system. This protects us.
It's 1% of the value of what you're protecting.
Correct. That's why I thought when I saw the cable TV and, and security, that doesn't make any sense to me. It's just, it's too, you know, the price is not, doesn't make any sense.
Anybody else?
I only have one comment, Mr. Chair. At our last discussion, I had made the suggestion of having the fire station design come out of the capital budget for the 600, in excess of 600,000. I know there was a lot of, you know, we're going to cut the capital budget in half and what I'd like to make a recommendation to this board is possibly set $100,000 aside in the capital budget for that project, okay? So that, as in, we go to the town meeting, there's a line specifically for the design for $100,000 for the fire station, out of the 1.2, or close to 1.2 million. I don't think that it's going to be a huge impact. It's still 1.1 million going towards capital for the town. It was, every dime counts in my eyes, every dime counts. So, and I'd also suggest that any retired debt here on in be focused in towards the fire station project also for the design. And again, it's just, the more we can save, $100,000 this year, $100,000 next year, the $300,000 that possibly by the time the design kicks up in '16, we don't have to borrow that.
Well, we'll keep that in mind. I think where we go from here is to...
I drastically cut the 600,000 down that I asked for.
I, I think where we go from here is we have our, our priorities from the departments that, that should report to us. And I appreciate that. I think it's exactly what I had wanted to see so that we could look at this in a, in a meaningful manner. We're not on the, we're not on the trucks and in the buildings every day, so it's nice to have this. I think now we have to take this information with the same request that we got from the other departments, that we made to the other departments, and just come up with a recommendation for the cap plan for the, to finance. Any update on the other departments reporting back in a similar manner?
We can schedule other departments for your meeting on either next Monday night or, and/or the following.
Well, again, where I was at with that is I think that we just need to take those in priority. I don't want school thinking they report to us. I think we just want their prioritization so that we can get one thing. We need, we need to set these priorities for these departments.
Yeah, I mean, we have, but we have, there are other general government departments though, IT, yeah.
Library.
Yeah. UFC facilities. PMBC is scheduled to come in on the 27th to present their stuff. We're, this, I don't think it's on the agenda, but this Thursday night, we're boards jointly meeting with the planning board who has requested $100,000 for updating the master plan. So there, there are still a lot of things that we need to review in the capital plan.
Okay, all right.
And we can be bringing that forward in future meetings.
Okay. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'd just like to, before we do that, thank everybody for coming out for an extra night. I know it's, it's not that big of a burden, but I appreciate everybody taking the time for an extra meeting.
Very good. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'm scoring the football game.
Hey, anyone here?